Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Hello and welcome to a special meeting of the Bennington Select Board. This is Monday, March 7th. We are in the Bennington Fire Facility. My name is Jeanne Jenkins and I chair this board. I'm going to ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Gary.
Gary Corey, good evening. Hi, Tom Haley.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Good evening, I'm Jeanne Connor.
Hi, I'm Bruce Lee Clark.
Hello, Sarah Perrin.
Thank you very much. And also with us this evening are Stu Hurd, our town manager, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent notes for us, and Jim Vires on the camera for Cat TV. Thank you so much. All right, so we have, we are meeting really for the purpose of a public hearing on the TIF district substantial change, but first, I'd like a motion on the consent agenda for the purposes of discussion.
Um, second.
All right, any discussion on the consent agenda, which is really the warrants? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. All right, great. All right, then we move on to the public hearing, and I believe Dan Monks is going to introduce this public hearing on the Tax Increment Financing District substantial change.
Of course, this is, we're getting started. We have a microphone.
I can hear you now.
Can you hear us?
I can now, yes.
Great, all right. All right, disaster avoided. All right, all right. Hello, everyone. Dan Monks, Assistant Town Manager. I know you all know me, so we're here this evening to have a public hearing regarding a substantial change request on our TIF district plan, our Tax Increment Financing District Plan. I'm going to say very few words. I'm going to introduce Stephanie Clark, who is the expert, one of the premier experts on TIF in Vermont, and she was hired as our consultant to prepare our update to the TIF district plan. We are, just quickly, we adopted the TIF plan in 2017, and we need to do an update, and Stephanie will explain why, but she has prepared the plan, and we will be submitting it to the Vermont Economic Progress Council for approval very soon. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Stephanie Clark with White and Burke, so she can walk us through the steps, the new plan or the updated plan, as well as the steps to get the approval for the update. So Stephanie, with that, you're up.
Hey, thank you so much. Everyone here be okay?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. I've blurred out my background, but truthfully, you'll see this like moving object over here. It's just a cat, it's okay. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. This is our, some slides, just to kind of give us a good place to start. So, thank you again for the introduction. I am Stephanie Clark, White and Burke. I have met several of you. I have worked for the town before when we put the district together back in 2017, so it's great to be back and to be working with this community. And tonight, I'm just going to quickly go through a few slides to reset the definition of TIF, so kind of level set us, so we all have the same understanding, and then to go through what our proposal entails and any time for questions. So, TIF is an economic development tool. Many of you already know about it, but just for those who don't, it is a useful tool for a municipality to catalyze development, private investment into your community. It is one of the town's only ways to really grow its brand list, and the way to doing this is through infrastructure and removing infrastructure barriers that private developments may have in adding value to their sites and to their properties. So, to do this, a municipality takes out a bond for a piece of infrastructure that would remove that barrier for the private development. Then, the municipality builds the infrastructure and the private sector builds their development. This is usually done hand in hand as a public private partnership, and the new incremental taxes that are created from that private investment go to repay the debt on that bond. And the way that works, and the reason we have a process for this, including a state process, is because you retain not only the residual incremental new taxes, but a portion of estate incremental taxes. Keep in mind two things. One, these are taxes that would not have existed. These are values in your brand list that would not exist but for the town's involvement and adding a public infrastructure piece to catalyze that private development. Would not happen otherwise. And the second piece to remember is that these are not new, it's not a new tax, and it is not increasing the tax rate directly. It is the taxes that a property would pay on a newly developed or redeveloped site that are just diverted into the TIF fund that repays the infrastructure. And the infrastructure has a public benefit in many ways. It could be a stormwater project, it could be parking, it could be brownfield remediation, but it has the net public benefit as well. So, Bennington set up a district in 2017 in the downtown. There is a boundary within the TIF district. It is not the entire town. It is your, it is your, really, pretty much your downtown is our core district here. But in that approval, there is, there are windows within the state TIF program, and the first window is that you must incur your debt by within five years. So that is on January 31st of this year. And if you don't incur the debt by the first five years, the first debt, you have to apply for an extension, which is why we're here today. Otherwise, you have 10, from the beginning, you're supposed to have 10 years to incur the debt, all the debt that you want to incur to be able to utilize the program. So if we are extended, we must incur that first debt by March 31st, 2027, so that's the five-year extension, but we only get five more years in that window to incur first debt. With a new little twist, which is that because of the pandemic, legislature extended the window for borrowing for existing districts by two years. So originally, you were allocated 10 years in 2017 to incur all your debt by 2027, but now you have until 2029, but you must incur that first debt in the next five years. Not to be too easy. But the point of, the last point on this slide is that once you return that first debt, you have 20 years from that point on to retain the increment. So you will have 20 years of accruing incremental due tax from the properties in your TIF district that will go to retire your debt. So what we need to do now is to submit an extension to VFC to say, we have plans, we want to use this tool, and we need more time to work on that, and so we have the submission materials that we've put in your packets that have been on the website for weeks now. That includes an updated plan summary, because you have an original TIF district plan, this is an updated summary, and the workbook, which is comprised of many, many worksheets, and that's the financing that could happen if you were to do all of the projects that were laid out. Now, in another little twist, the VFC program has indicated that they would, if they were to consider an extension, would be redesigning Bennington as a, what's called, master TIF. So what you have now is, we're laughing about a normal TIF, a regular TIF. They don't really have a term for it, but it's what a lot of other municipalities have. But a few municipalities have a master TIF, and that's what they are going to recommend you do here. And what that means is that you have your plan, you have your set project that you're going to come, that you're planning to do, but you have to come back to VFC with a phased filing when you are ready to do your project. And I will tell you, it is a very, very similar process to a regular TIF. There's almost no difference. In a regular TIF, if you do anything different than what you had in your original plan from the first time you set out your plan, and if you have much of a difference at all, you have to come back with a substantial change. So it's not much different, but in terms of process, it gives us an opportunity to project more broadly and discuss the plans we have for properties that we just don't know a lot about yet, and you will see in the materials that we are looking at some projects out for more years now that we want to do, and those you're just not going to have specificity around. So this allows you to come to the state and say, we have these plans, we don't know a lot of specifics, can we come back to you with the more specifics? And they say, yes, because you're a master TIF, you can come back with a phased filing. So what we're asking for tonight is approval of the updated summary and the workbook. This is again, a menu of options. It is consistent with your original plan, so it's nothing really new, and it's asking you to sign a letter to submit this to the state, but what we're not asking for is to authorize any debt. This is not a vote on an actual project yet. This is authorization of extending the ability to use the tool. So with that, I will explain the overview of the update that we made here, which is, you've had a list of several projects back in 2017 that we all wanted to do, and you'll notice I'm going back and forth between you and me, because I find myself so invested in this project that I can't help myself, but I am trying to make it, because it's your project. This is a list of all the private developments that could happen if the public were to make these infrastructure investments. And we pared that down, and partially it's because we have a shorter time horizon now. It's not 10 years, it's actually seven years that we have remaining in our TIF district to incur the debt, but what it also reflects is that actually, the town has done a lot of work in the last five years and made some of those projects obsolete that we had identified five years ago, which is great. It's music to the state's ears, because it says, hey, you know, this process works. You've used this process to do some really good planning, but you've also found other funding sources to do it. So win-win. The public investments we had originally projected were going to total around $5.7 million, and the projections in our current plan are around $1.1, because we pared that list down a bit, and the original plan had those all in 2019 and 2022. Since March 2022, we are looking at projecting those plans from 2023 to 2025, so those private investments, or, I'm sorry, public investments into the infrastructure. But all of these projects are consistent with the original plan in the project criteria, which is an element of the VFC approval process. They're the same purpose, and they show a lot of the same viability signs that the state is looking for and that you would be looking for as viable projects to invest in. So I'll just walk you through the five projects. They're going to seem very familiar to you, partially because they are the ones that were included in the original plan, and also because there's been some traction on some of these. At Bennington High, we are projecting in our plan the redevelopment of around 40 housing units, a mix of workforce and vertical housing, and the community investment, public piece, would be a community center that would include the relocated senior center, as well as the use of the gymnasium, the auditorium, and classroom space. So again, but for the town playing a role in this project and being the tenant and providing this important use for these housing projects, these housing units. But for that, this project could not happen. That's the important piece, and so the town needs to be a partner to make this happen. Put in phase two, the town needs to be a partner here too. They have many partners and many different sources of financing, but there's a significant infrastructure piece here that the town should be taking on as a municipality, because there's a lot of public benefit, to be doing the redevelopment of upgrades of Washington Avenue, West Main Street, as well as the parking area upgrades to the site parking, and taking over that parking to add to the public parking inventory is not only going to catalyze this project into reality, but also going to serve the state our public benefit. The next three projects are a little, we call them tier two and tier three projects, because they're a little further down the road, but they're, they've been talked about for a long time, and they bring our original plan. At Padmont School, we have heard of plans for redevelopment of 20 units of housing, and the town would invest in the construction of a public parking lot, as well as do stormwater improvements, create some green space, and install some lighting, some for the public lighting. And that infrastructure would also benefit the Old Drysdale, which is underutilized currently, but with those improvements nearby, could see a reorganization of the retail on the first floor with upstairs residential renovations. And lastly, a familiar building here, the 120 Depot Street. It is an underutilized site and could be developed up, so you could have some first floor, it could be able to use property first floor retail or commercial with some upstairs units. The, in order to make that possible though, water main would need to be redeveloped to serve the multi-story development. There would need to be improvements to the Depot Street Bridge and state state improvements, as well as improvements to the Bennington Station parking lot. So again, this kind of public private partnership is where the town would play a role in helping an investor or a current property owner or a new developer coming in, looking to make the numbers work, because we all know downtown development is so challenging, especially in this environment with the construction prices being what they are, to make the numbers work and all of the infrastructure burden for some problems that preexisted that exist, and irrespective of that particular site, that's where the town can take responsibility. So our next steps will, from this meeting, if approved for an extension, we will submit our materials by the end of the week, and then we will be eligible to be heard of the meetings on the 28th of April or the 26th of May, which we don't have control over which we should be heard of. They're very busy, but we would be ready to meet them as soon as they are. And concurrently, the town is working on public private partnerships and trying to set those pieces in motion to see what role and how the town can plug in. And with hopefully that work, we'll be teed up to have a bond vote in 2023, most likely on one of the first two of those projects, Bennington High or the, uh, in phase two. With that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. That's great. Any questions from the board? No question? Well, can I just, can I just ask, on the, ooh, this very detailed, can you see this? This very detailed sheet. I just, just, it's a sort of a minor question, but I'm just wondering if you can help me read the legend on page two for the project, for the specific projects, the locations are either CW, PW, or CO. Do you know what are, what are those?
Yeah, those are, uh, David, I'm sorry, that town is coming up, because this is intended for, this is VFC language. They want to know if the project is completely within, partially within, or completely outside of the standard.
Ah, okay. I knew it was going to be something like, yeah.
Yeah.
Made a lot of guesses, but not those. All right, all right. That was, that was my question.
It would have been good if I included those the workbook instructions, but I think anyone else wanted to nerd out that part, but I'm.
I tried, but yeah.
I'm proud of you for catching.
It's pretty, yeah, it's very detailed. Yes, Gary?
One question I had is, the district doesn't change from what it is right now.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little bit hard here.
So Stephanie, the question was, the district doesn't change from what it is right now. I assume you mean Gary, the district boundaries.
Yes.
Yep. And the answer is, no, it doesn't change, Stephanie. It stays exactly.
That's right.
Other questions from the board?
What do we need to do, do tonight?
Well, tonight, we are going, we will need to do two things. One, we have to approve this, and second, we have to sign the letter approving it. So, but let's ask public if they have any questions. All right, so move to the public. Any questions from the public or any comments from the public? Yes, Michael? Come on up to the microphone. All right. Yeah, I wish we had a, I don't know, a microphone that ran across the top.
Stephanie, how are you?
Long time no see, like about five days. Yeah. Would you?
Oh, hi, it's Michael. Okay, I can't, I can't see.
Oh, introduce yourself, Michael.
Oh, Ben, don't worry about it. Michael Keen.
But I got you.
Yeah. I, my name, just for, for the sake of propriety, my name is Michael Keen. I'm a resident of North Bennington. In the interest of full disclosure, I've been serving on the Vermont Economic Progress Council since 2012. I will be sitting on this determination when this comes up to us, as I did on the 2017 determination. Stephanie, would you speak a little more about the use of master TIF for everybody so that they get to understand that a bit, because that came up in our conversation last week with another, with another applicant? Do you mind doing that?
Sure. I can speak to two elements that I think are relevant. One is the importance of planning, and I think that master TIF, I don't know if this is exactly the question you're asking, Michael, but master TIF from a planning perspective requires all the same planning that was required of your first TIF application, for example. So all the same information is to be provided to the state to review how viable your plans are, how realistic, how much nexus they have to, to the actual downtown benefit and, and investment. But the difference, the key difference is that from a state review perspective, it means that they don't have to find a nally in each of the criteria, because they can say, leave some of those open, and when you come back with your phased filing, then you can check those boxes. And for example, under the project criteria, you have to complete three of the five project criteria. And in the case of Bennington, we apply it under the project criteria of formal housing and brownfield, Sam, is that right?
That's right, yes.
Now, master, master TIF has a few less moving parts at the outset, which is probably easier for people to understand.
Sure. Yeah, it has fewer moving parts, and it has, well, it has, it has a lot of moving parts, but the parts that are moving don't need to be decided until you come back with your phased filing. So you can leave moving things in that, because it's a 10-year window, it's a 10-year, if you're applying for a time, at this point, it's a seven-year window, and you're going to be projecting to make investments. We just don't know what's going to come down the pike in five or six years that we might want to do, and we don't have enough specificity. So this gives us a nice roadmap as a municipality to start planning and to make some, some passionate conversations and make some agreements with property owners to do the public private partnership, because we have the confidence that we have the tool, and then come back with the phased filing. So it allows us a little bit more confidence and gives the town the ability to start using the tool, but then come back with more specificity for the exact implementation.
Thus, you all have just had a brief master class in master tips.
Excellent.
Seriously. One comment I had, and maybe I could lead that to a question, or a question that might lead to a comment from somebody. If TIF debt had been incurred before the end of this period, we would have been on the way, and let's say this whole meeting and this whole affair would have been unnecessary. Would there have been a way to incur some of that TIF debt? And what did we miss by not incurring that TIF debt sooner? Would anybody like to speak to that? Steffi, or you, or Dan, or whoever?
I can say that, well, first of all, Michael, if we had incurred the debt before the five year window, we inevitably would have come back with substantial changes.
Yeah, sure.
Because we wouldn't have nailed it in 2017. And at that point, I have a feeling that we would have also been converted to a master TIF. So that's kind of interesting. So I don't think we have, I just want to make it very clear, becoming a master TIF is not a bad thing at all, and from my seat as your consultant, I think it's a win-win, it's a no-brainer. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that this is not a, as any kind of punishment. And to have incurred debt earlier would have meant that you would have started retaining increments sooner, but I don't know that there's, if you weren't ready and the projects weren't happening, I mean, if you had incurred debt three years ago, and then pandemic, and all of your, your public or private partners and private development had stopped occurring, you would have seen this lull in your incremental building period over the 20 years that you wouldn't be growing very much, right? Because people just kind of stalled out in terms of their investments. So there's actually a little bit of a benefit to have started, to be starting a little bit later, in my opinion. And you want to start when you have momentum, you want to start incurring when you've got lots of momentum, you've got lots of projects that you're going to see now totally kick off.
One more question, if I might, for everybody. In, in this environment, post-pandemic, but Ukraine and an inflationary environment, what will that do to the prospect of incurring debt through a bond bank or through a commercial bank?
I don't think every other word. I'm not sure of the audio. Dan, I don't know.
Okay, very simply, let me repeat it again. We're going into an inflationary period where interest rates provided by banks will increase. What do you think that's, have you guys had any forecast in your own minds about how that will affect any number of TIF projects in any one of the municipalities?
I see. Sure, it's a factor, absolutely. I think the increase in rates, and the, it's more the, I think the increase in rates is one thing, and that definitely has an impact. I think the bigger issue is the increase in construction costs and the delays in timing on construction projects. It's the bigger risk. And we are seeing some projects trying to accelerate their timing. Some of our municipalities are trying to accelerate because they want to get going as soon as they can. Although, one of the districts I'm working with is actually looking to do something a little bit later too, is actually saying, let's hold for a minute and see what the next six months brings in terms of the construction environment.
Thank you.
So, across the board, and it depends on the specific project, and it depends on the vendor, the vendors of anger tenants, it depends on a lot of the private project side, and public can kind of meet the private where it is, but you need that private project to be really solid.
Thank you.
Can I just say, I mean, and I think, Michael, back to your second question, I do think that we really benefited, the town of Bennington has benefited from allowing sort of the momentum to grow and for people to think about what we needed as a community and what the opportunities were. And I also think that this influx of ARPA money has really allowed us to think much more broadly than we were thinking before, because we had a ready set, you know, source of funding, and coupling that with both the possibility of TIF and also the possibility of state monies coming in. It does feel to me like, you know, what we've done in the, in our, you know, economic development sessions has been really beneficial and, and has made these projects stronger.
I agree with you 100%. I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, yeah. I didn't expect it to turn out that way, but I, yeah, I'm really pleased.
Yeah. And by the way, I have known Stephanie since we all were involved in the St. Albans TIF together, and it's always a pleasure to see you. You do great work.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. And that's a great point, and I think you both just summed it up in the way that if you incurred debt four years ago, we would have had this gap during the pandemic where you wouldn't be growing your increment, your TIF fund as much. The only downside, I didn't mention this, the downside of not incurring debt sooner is that, again, now you have seven years instead of the original 10, or what you might have had at the beginning, 12 years to do projects. And so of course, that's, you know, you want to make the most use of the window you have to do investments, because the ideal, and you can see this in St. Albans. because the ideal, and you can see this in St. Albans, they did one project, and then there was momentum, they did two projects, and now they're three, and they come back with substantial change after substantial change, to say, oh, we got a new project, we found a new user that could really use this brownfield cleanup, let's do it. And so it really creates that momentum, and you can really power, you know, it power up your incurred window. But again, if you're not ready, and if, to me, it just wasn't the start line like that, it's better not to pull the trigger prematurely. So do you think that was for the best? It did turn out, it was, it turned out for the best?
Thank you. Any other, other questions? Yes, Nancy, please.
Hi, Nancy White, Bennington. I've been looking at the plans for the TIF online, I believe for four or five years. Why didn't they ever come to a vote?
The select board did vote on this. But the select board voted on this five years. We have not, we have not gone out to the public for a bond vote. I mean, that's, that's why, that's why we need to do this now. We have not started a project. So.
And who put those plans together? Would that be the BCIC and the BCRC?
No, the town put, that was a, that was a town project, and White and Burke, they were our consultants five years ago. That's, that's why Stephanie knows this project so well.
Okay. And, and the city manager for St. Albans, he's been working on this, too?
So Dom Cloud is the city manager, and maybe six, seven years ago, Michael Keen invited him down, and there was a very public meeting at the Bennington Museum, as well as some other gatherings, where he talked about how TIF had been used in St. Albans to really spur growth, and gave us some excellent examples, and offered to stay in touch with us, which he has done over the years. And so when we asked, when we started looking at the ARPA funds, the use of the ARPA funds, and wanted to expand that out, we hired White and Burke, and also Dom Cloud as a consultant on that project. So that was a slightly different project. What came out of that project was a, was a decision that, in fact, we did want to continue and request the extension on the TIF for the substantial change, that it was worth our while, because there were projects that would benefit from that.
Is he being paid out of the $50,000, too?
What $50,000?
Oh, I thought he was working now as a consultant.
No, I, no, that was a different project.
Okay. I'm, I'm confused about the Putnam Block, because the people of Bennington have been told from day one, it is a, it's a private project, they're getting public money, but the citizens have had no say. Two weeks ago, I asked for the plans to be shown at the firehouse for voting, so the citizens could see them. Jeanne said it's a private project. So I think there's a real disconnect between, between the public, the Putnam Block and the people of Bennington. Are we going to get involved in that, or no?
So what we're talking about with TIF would be infrastructure that would benefit that project and other projects. And from there, I think I would turn it over to Stephanie. But it is not, it's not for the building of the Putnam Project. It's for infrastructure that supports the community and that project.
It was five or six years ago, and Mr. Keen was the vice chair of the select board when we had a special meeting. And I asked at that meeting, all the economic development people were here, why the people of Bennington hadn't voted, to see if we wanted to participate in the Putnam Block. And everybody told me it was a private project. And I said, well, who's going to pay for the parking lot? And Stu said, well, there's lots of ways to pay for it. I don't think the citizens of Bennington should have to be put on the hook for this project at this point. We've had no say.
So Nancy, this is a time to ask questions. You will get, if, if it goes out for a vote, then you will certainly have a vote. But I think Stephanie is here as a, as an expert right now, so if you have questions about how TIF and Putnam Block intersect, she can very much answer that question.
Okay. When I look at most of the properties you're talking about, parking is going to be practically non-existent. How does it benefit the people of Bennington to get us tied into all of these properties where, where the citizens aren't going to have a place to park?
Not really a question for Stephanie.
Yeah.
She, oh, she can, okay. Well, I, I think.
That's a more theoretical question.
Well, I think you're going to, I've been asking about the Ben High for over a year. 40 apartments, people working there, parking will be a nightmare for citizens. I think it's a waste of money, ARPA money, to try to do it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I think maybe determining at this point in time that the parking is going to be a nightmare is a little premature. We haven't even seen the design. We have a long way to go before we're counting parking places at all of these projects, but especially at Ben High. I don't think we're there yet.
But it also is not. So this is a hearing on the TIF substantial change. And so if you have questions for Stephanie, who's our expert, please ask them.
Okay. Well, I, I just, I think many in Bennington have a lot of concerns about the projects that, that you've pointed out, what you're going to use them for. And if you're going to spend all this time and money, I think you're going to have a very difficult time getting the citizens to support and, and vote for a TIF.
All right. So thank you.
Because actually, the citizens have had no say.
Nancy, if you have a question, this is a public hearing, so this is your time to have say.
It is a public hearing, and I'm trying to get questions about some of these projects. I've asked about the Putnam Block for six years. I've asked about the Ben High for a year and a half.
Nancy, do you have a specific question for, for Stephanie? She is here as our expert. If you have a TIF question, she is more than happy to answer it.
Hope, I guess not. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Case is not just absolutely crystal clear. None of these projects will move forward without a vote by the residents of Bennington. So this is just a plan to allow us to maintain this tool as a possibility in the future. The town of Bennington residents, voters, will have the final say. So Nancy, you'll be able to participate in that process, just like everyone.
Great. Any other questions for Stephanie? This is a lot of work. We appreciate it. And I, if we have, if there are no more comments or questions, then I'm wondering if someone might like to make a motion to approve this substantial change document? Thank you. Any further discussion? Nope. Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right.
And then could we also just have a motion to submit the plan to Stephanie and I?
So move.
All, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.